Hello, welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today we are joined by Julie from our team. Hey Julie. We're thrilled to have you here today and today we are going to be talking about how to maintain your most important asset in your business. So before we dive in, we do have a couple of live website reviews that were requested today. So we are going to be making time for those at the close of the call. Thank you for your patience for those who signed up for that. I'll be sharing with you how you can sign up if you want to work with us on a future session like this. But in the meantime, where are you in the world? Let us know where you're coming in from. We are excited to have you here today. We're always thrilled to meet our global audience on these Thursday calls. And let me see, I'll open up the chat over here so I can actually see you. What is up? Waynesville, North Carolina, South Dakota, Grand Rapids, Arizona, Kansas. Julie's in Florida. I'm in New York. I just got back from California though. I am over the, what do you call it? The jet lag. That took a few days. We got Canada, Canada. What's up BC? Awesome. We're thrilled to have you guys here today. So yeah, so today we're going to get into some slides. We will get into some show and tell, some how to, if you guys want to request, you know, how to do a particular thing that is maybe you see what I'm talking about and you're like, wait, but what? How do I do that? Let us know and we'll make some time to go and walk through that and, and check that out. So I'm going to go turn off our, our videos here. So we've got a great recording for YouTube with these slides. And we're going to hop right into it, you guys, just to, you know, preserve time because we do have quite a lot to cover today. All right. So on today's Get Growing Weekly Work Session, we're talking about how to maintain your list of customers and leads, your list being the most important asset that you possess in your business for a number of reasons. So what we'll be talking about today is how you can effectively connect with your current and past customers and easily find the right people to reach out to at the right times. We're also going to talk about how you can stay organized and on top of what needs doing in your business. And I will be sharing with you a preview of some new in-depth resources that are free to our customers that will help you master your marketing and communications. And then of course, as always, some live help and Q and A. So if you are here today and you have questions, if you're looking for help, even if it has nothing to do with today's topic on this live call, please add your questions to the Q and A. Our chat can get a little busy and I don't want to miss anything that might be coming up. So please put those in the Q and A and Julie and I will make sure you get your questions answered. And if you want to be on a live call like this in the future, if you're watching this on YouTube in the future, go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to always know what we'll be talking here, talking about here next. And of course, know how you can join one of these live calls. And if you would like to work together on a live call, like two people will be doing with us today, you can go to getoiling.com/webstatereview. This isn't just limited to your website. This could be anything. If you're just getting started with us, if you're trying to figure out a strategy, if you feel stuck on something, there is really no wrong question here that we can sit down and figure out how to answer. All right. So getting into today's topic, as a business owner, everybody here today is a business owner. There is one thing, one thing that you possess that is critical to the daily functioning and future growth of your business. Of course, I gave it away in the title slide. We all know now that this is our list, right? As a young living brand partner, even if you've only got one customer, this one thing is hands down something that can make or break your success. Critical. What it is, is your list, right? It is your list of current and potential customers. This is true whether you are a young living brand partner, a massage therapist, an attorney, a practitioner of any kind, a coach, a consultant, a whatever, whatever kind of business you have, your most important asset is your list of people you currently serve, who you have served and who you might serve in the future. So what a list is, just to make this totally demystify this, make this really, really simple to understand. All a list is, your list is names and contact information of people who said yes to hearing from you. That's it. People who said, I want to hear what you have to say, or I want to buy from you, or I have bought from you, right? Now, as a brand partner, you already have the customer part of your list. It's in your Young Living virtual office. You've already got that, right? And we're going to talk a little bit today about how you can use Get Oiling to manage that and how you can make sure you're making the most of it and using it correctly. And maybe if you've been following our trainings here, some trainings from our partners, you've maybe begun building a list of potential future Young Living customers as well. Actually, let me see, like, let me know in the chat or raise your hand, pop your hand up. Let me know. Are you building a list of potential Young Living customers using your Good Oiling system? Are you gathering leads? Maybe you're doing events, right? Maybe you're holding in-person or virtual events. Maybe you are just connecting with people out in your community, right? We're building a list of leads as well, which is just such a really, really important part of your business, you guys. That's why we have a whole training on this and several of them. All right. So your list is different from an audience on social media. I think this is a really important thing to, to, to note as a distinction here. You could see people with an audience on social media of tens of thousands. But that doesn't mean that they have this asset working for them in their business. And typically, when you see kind of the difference between a really successful business that's operating online and one that just looks successful, the list that, that, that business has tends to be an indicator of the success that they have. A lot of us see the vanity metrics of, oh, I have 20,000, 70,000, whatever followers. Well, how many people are opening your emails, right? Difference, different from an audience on social media where you don't own your means of communication. This is part of why a list is so critical. You don't own the way you communicate with people on social. When you post something on social media, you don't know who it's going to reach or when, right? Heck, that the powers that be could think that what you had to say wasn't good enough and they could slap it down, right? And nobody will see it. But when you own your way of communicating with people, you can say what you want to, when you want to, right? So your list is made up of people who have shared their name and contact information with you. They have either given it to you directly. They're your friend. Maybe their, their contact is in your phone. It's a really basic way of looking at this. But more specifically as a business, these are people who have registered to an attendant event. They have signed up for a free thing on your website. They have signed up for maybe an informational call with you. They've come to one of your classes. These are people that make up your list. These are people who have shared their name and their contact info, so their phone number, their email with you because they want to hear from you. They want to be helped by you. And maybe now, maybe in the past, but very likely in the future, they might want to purchase from you importantly, right? So your list is an asset that you own that makes it possible for you to grow your business and your check whenever and wherever you want. Okay. So let's get into some list 101s. This is some key mindset stuff, you guys. Please take these things to heart, write them down, put them on your wall, whatever it is you need to really internalize these things, right? We're going to first, we're going to get into the four rules of list maintenance. That's our mindset piece. Then we're going to actually talk about maintaining and connecting with your customer list and then maintaining and connecting with your list of leads. Now let's get into the mindset as promised. All right. There are four rules of list maintenance. Etch these in stone, put them where you can see them next to wherever you manage your list. Okay? Rule number one is quality over quantity. Our goal is to connect with people who are ready right now. Our goal is to connect with people who are most interested in what we have to say. Not to build the biggest bullhorn. The purpose of having a list, having a social following, excuse me, having any presence online for the purpose of growing your Young Living business is to find interested people and to be a homing beacon for them to come to you. Not to be a billboard or a bullhorn to shout information in the direction of people who may or may not be interested in whatever it is that you feel like you need to say right now, right? Quality over quantity. It is better for you to have a list of 10 people who open every email and click every link and hit reply and do everything that you recommend to do in your calls to action than to have a thousand people who don't open anything. Love on the people who have their eyes open and are listening to what you have to say. And really find a way to be okay with the fact that even though you might have a big list from your VO, if you've got a lot of people who have shared, maybe, you know, you've got folks who are in your VO who are not your personals, right? We don't want to take personal that they aren't paying attention to us because they don't know us, right? So this is what leads us into the next really, really critical mindset piece. And this is, I think, important for our industry in general and growing a business online and growing followings in general, but it is critical for your list. Some will, some won't. So what? Look, people are highly distracted in today's day and age and they're thinking of 10 million things that are not your business. One of the most important pieces of advice, of advice I think I ever received as a new business owner was that nobody cares about your business. Nobody. You do, right? But nobody cares about it like you do, right? So we have to go through the world, understanding that as much as we would like for people to really be deeply invested in all of these things that we pour our thoughts and our hearts into. The fact is, is that we are trying to shine a light where there's just a whole lot of clouds, right? And that's okay. You just keep shining your light and the people who have their eyes up to the sky are going to see you, right? So don't take it personal. When, you know, somebody who, maybe you've met them personally, maybe they're personally enrolled. When they unsubscribe from you, don't take it like it's a personal affront, right? Or if somebody doesn't open your emails or whatever that might be. It just means that they're not ready to engage. It's usually, it usually has absolutely nothing to do with you. It's actually about their inbox, their habits, their stress, their daily life, right? So don't take it personal when people don't pay attention or even more importantly, when they choose to disengage. Because again, quality over quantity, people will show you that they're quality. You can't decide that they do. Then critically, set clear expectations. And then be consistent with what you've promised. So if you say that you are going to email your, your folks weekly about wellness, don't be surprised if you don't email for two months and you send your next email, hopefully it is about wellness, that people realize, oh, who is this person? I don't know what this is. And gosh forbid, if it's promoting something, that might make them immediately go and, you know, and unsubscribe and tune you out because they weren't expecting to hear from you, right? So stay consistent to what you've committed to and make sure that you're stating clearly at the outset what they can expect from you. Because what you're ultimately doing and having an email list, or this applies to text as well, is you're creating agreement, an agreement between you and another person where you're saying, I am going to provide value to you that you're interested in. I have something that you want. In this case, it's usually knowledge, right? How to, something like that. I'm going to provide that to you at this interval and this is going to be kind of the rough idea of what it'll be. If you do that, you follow through, people will look forward to opening every single thing you send them, reading it fully and taking action on it, right? Then we want to keep what we're sharing relevant to what they want. Remember, your business isn't about your OGV. It's not about your check. It's not about your next rank. Your business is about how you help people get what they want. Right? Who here knows this Jim Rohn quote? You get what you want when you help others. I'm paraphrasing. When you help others get what they want first, right? If you help people get what they want, the money will follow. And if you make your business about helping people get what they want, if you make the way you communicate with your prospective customers and your customers, if you make it about what they want, make it about helping them, you will be helped financially, right? That's the exchange here. All right. So these are the rules of list maintenance. Take a screenshot of this, write these down. Remember these. These will guide you to make the right decisions, to have the right habits and to be in the right mindset when you're going about communicating with your customers, your leads and your team. Okay? Now let's get into customer list maintenance. First, a note. I mentioned this briefly a second ago. You might have a lot of names in your VO file. But that doesn't mean that those people, all of those people gave you permission to send them marketing content. Chances are, if you have shared Young Living and you have folks who have been excited and started sharing under you, right? If your whole VO file is not just your personals, there's a really good chance you got a lot of people in there who don't know you, right? And who did not agree to receive information from you. This is a really important thing to remember. Usually where we're talking about a business, building a list, you're not starting with a list like you have in the VO, right? Usually you're starting from one, right? And then you're building from there. With Young Living, you might have a list of thousands in your VO. But only, you know, 50 to 100 of those might be your personals, right? People who know you, who expect to hear from you. So it's important to remember this. So remember, if you're in this position, the first rule of list building, quality over quantity. Just because you have those contacts, just because your list says it's, you know, your team has a thousand people in it, doesn't mean that every time you get some new information, or it's the first of the month that you need to be sending that info to a thousand people, right? Does that make sense? We really want to make sure we're focusing on getting information out to those who said yes to us. And we need to trust that either by other means or by their sponsor or social media or Young Living's own promotional emails, which they are doing a good job of of late, that they will be receiving the information appropriate to what they're interested in, right? But we can't really lead a horse to water here and we will negatively impact our ability to be reached or to, to reach others rather, to, to land in the inbox if we are habitually sending lots of emails to people who don't want them, right? That's what's going to put you eventually into the spam folder and, you know, into the promotion folder and so on, when you're actually sending emails to folks. Okay? So the key here is to invite your VO list to get your resources, to sign up for your newsletter, to get access to your vault, what have you. And then send what you want to share only to those who have said yes. And so if you have a list of a thousand and those are not a thousand personally enrolled, there may be 15 who say yes. And we need to be in a place of abundance in our mindset and remember quality over quantity and just keep trucking. All right? And, and then of course, importantly, for all of your personally enrolled, make sure that you set expectations with them. I'm going to be sending updates at X interval. I will be sharing information like this. Expect to hear from me. Go ahead and add me to your address book and look for me when I send you stuff. All right. So let's talk about maintaining your customer list. This is a training that we did recently or fairly recently about how to import your VO file, right? And how to apply tags appropriately to your VO file to move your customer list over from your Young Living account and to get oiling. So what I want you to do is make a habit of uploading that VO file weekly with a unique tag for Young Living, right? So when you upload and you'll see the directions in this video, when you upload your VO file, you have an opportunity to tag the people with something like Young Living, YLVO or YL list. Just pick one and stick with it, one tag, one name that you're going to apply to all of these people in this category and just commit to doing this on a weekly basis. So you always have the new folks in your system. You've always got the opportunity to invite more people to get your resources and to hear from you. Okay? Now, this is a strategy that I've shared in depth on this training, which is permission-based marketing. Okay? And basically what we're going to do here is we're going to take our whole VO list and one time, we're going to invite them all. Hey, you may not know me, but I'm a member of your Young Living Support Team. I'm here to help you. If you would like to get the resources that I send out weekly to help you save money and get the most out of your products, just hit reply and let me know. Right? Send an invite out to your whole VO list. A lot of them will ignore, a lot of them will unsubscribe. That's totally fine. They don't know you. It's okay. Some will, some won't. So what, right? But then those who say yes are now going to be tagged. If you follow the steps in this training, they will now be tagged with something like Young Living Newsletter, right? And Julie has just posted, for those of you who are here live, posted to the chat, one of these trainings here on how to import and update your VO. And then there's this next one here as well that I think she may be putting into the chat. And we'll be putting this below in the description on YouTube as well. So no worries if you weren't catching it. All right. So remember, first thing that we're going to do is import our VO file and you can follow the instructions here in this video and apply a tag like Young Living to the whole list. And then you're going to invite folks to say yes to what you are sharing and they are going to get a new tag. So what you're going to do at that point is you're going to filter for those people who said yes. Right? So when it's time to share your, you know, first of the month gift with purchase promos, back in stock reports, new challenges. I know there's a few exciting ones this month, right? New trainings, new events, tickets on sale, beauty school convention, whatever. When it's time to share that information, pause, don't send it to that whole thousand. Filter for those who said yes, who, who now have the tag YL newsletter, for instance, right? And then we're going to keep sending information to the people who said yes in keeping with the expectations that we've set with them, right? So if you said, I'm going to share money-saving wellness tips on how to use your essential oils, then you probably shouldn't be sending them five emails about how they should become a brand partner. Because that's not really what you agreed to send them, right? So make sure you're setting expectations, be consistent about what it is that you're doing. And these people that have said yes will always be excited to hear from you when you send information to them. Okay? Now, final piece here, we want to maintain our list because our list is made of people and these people are people we have relationships with, right? So this is a recent training that we did that will allow you to learn how you can stay on top of who needs what with follow-up plans, right? So that you're more targeted in your outreach. Your people are going to appreciate you for really only spending, having them spend their time on things that are most relevant to them. Nobody wants to feel like their time is wasted, right? This is why it's so powerful to use a contact manager like what we have with Get Oiling, because you can tag people based on their interests, right? So if, if you've got something that you want to share that's for moms or moms with babies, if you have relationships with your people and you know who's a mom and who has babies, then you can filter your list for those folks and they're going to be really excited to hear and see what you're, what you're sharing. But if they're people who don't have kids that are just dog people, they're going to feel like a number, right? Automation is fantastic, but people really do prefer to be treated like people, right? So make sure that, you know, while we have all of these great opportunities to create automation and market to email lists, remember that your email list is people, right? And these are people who, if you pay attention to what they need, if you actually personally reach out to them, ask them how you can help them, what kind of information they would be best served by. Those are going to be the people, if you actually follow through and serve based on the information they're asking for, those are going to be the people who get excited enough to stick around with Young Living to the point where it is a no-brainer to start sharing and getting their product paid for. Right? We're really just looking for the people who are most ready to hear from us right now and filtering and filtering, filtering down to find the most ready. And always providing an opportunity to kind of stoke the fire and let people come closer, get a little warmer when they're ready. And when they're there and they're ready, you know what to do, right? Okay. So let's get into lead list maintenance. I know this isn't as much of a focus for those of us who are just getting started with Get Oiling, but if you have been building funnels, if you have been, you know, doing a lot of marketing events, things like that to build your list of potential customers, this stuff is going to be really important to you. All right. So first, tag your leads. Make sure your leads are getting tagged. So you can do this on landing pages and on pages with lead forms. So if somebody opts in to get a freebie, to attend an event, whatever that might be, you can add tags like leads, right? Anywhere somebody might opt into something where that person is a potential lead for Young Living, put the tag leads in. Now, if you offer more than just Young Living, then you might want to put Young Living Leads in as a tag because if you are a coach and maybe not everything that you talk about in coaching is super wellness-focused, maybe there is a coaching leads tag and a Young Living Leads tag, right? And you could add multiple tags to your pages and your landing pages here. So when people opt themselves in for something, when they RSVP for an event or whatever that might be, you can have your system tag them automatically. All right? You can also use automations to tag. So maybe you really like using text-in codes. So you can tell people, hey, text this to whatever number, so you can get access to this class on demand. And maybe you're offering that from a vendor event or, you know, at a live event, at a farmer's market, whatever. Well, if you go into Good Oiling and you create an automation that you just call add leads tag, and then you make the action to add a tag leads to that contact, you go and you create your text-in campaign, like you can see over here on the right, and you have it run in automation when somebody opts in. So when somebody texts info to your Get Oiling number, they're not only going to receive that message that you have in this campaign or series of messages, they're also now going to be tagged as a lead in your system, right? So now you can filter for leads when you've got something that is not, maybe it's not the, the PV promo stuff that you want to share, but maybe you wrote a new blog post or hosting a new event that non-Young Living members would really benefit from going to or viewing so that they might become one, right? And then finally, we should all be doing this when we are out in the world and we're making new contacts, making new friends. You can add tags when you add them to Get Oiling. Do this either on your computer or on your mobile device or in the AttractWell app that you can use to run your Get Oiling account, right? So all you got to do right here, after you put in first, last name, email address, whatever, just put a tag right there for leads, right? Or you can put a tag in here for leads. You can put a tag in here for mom. You can put a tag in here for kids, for pets, whatever, based on your conversation with them, might help you better categorize that person's interests so that when you come up with something in the future, you come across something that would be helpful to this person, you can search for the people that this would be most relevant to and you can reach out to them. And they will love you so much for thinking of them and remembering things that they told you about themselves, remembering things that they were interested in. Because again, people want to be treated like people, right? We don't use our Good Oiling system to treat people like numbers. We use it to better manage relationships so that it's easier to treat more people better, right? So that it's easier to have deeper relationships with more people without having to stuff all of this information in your brain and try to remember everything. And yeah, that's really overwhelming, right? All right. So another point here for maintaining your leads, guys, use tags that relate to things that you've interacted with that person around. So you could use tags that relate to your events. So if this was September 2022 Expo, that could be a tag because you want to be able to search for all the people that you've met or who registered for something from the September 2022 Expo, right? For interests, again, like I mentioned before, you met somebody, you're at the park, you both have kids, put in mom, put in kids, put in leads because they're not a customer yet, right? Offers. If you have freebies, if you have funnels that you've created where you are offering a free thing, maybe you've got a freebie around how to green your home, then maybe you need to have a tag on that landing page for leads, of course, but then also for green living, right? Or whatever the phrase you might want to use to apply to all of the people who fit those interests and opt into the offers that are aligned with them that you create. And then stages of your pipeline. We've talked about this in recent trainings as well. And actually, the last one that I mentioned here today, where we're using follow-up plans, stages of your pipeline can be from the point that you meet somebody up to the point where you are looking, you found an opportunity to ask them if they'd be interested in checking out Young Living as a solution to their problems. So that phase one, that could be a tag for somebody. And then you can change their tag over to, you know, the, the phase two, which is have shared Young Living, right? So now you can actually search for all the people that you have shared Young Living with and they show up separately from the rest of the leads. There are some people that are on your list that you've never talked to about Young Living. And then you'll be able to actually tell who are the people that I actually have shared Young Living with who aren't customers yet, right? So use these tags to your advantage because they are going to help you to be more organized and to be able to reach people in a way that's very meaningful to them. and to be able to reach people in a way that's very meaningful to them. And that's going to make them really love opening your emails and texts and actually responding to them, which works in your favor. The more people open your emails, click links in them, respond to them, the more engagement you get in their inbox. The more likely you are to be successfully delivered to another person's inbox. Right? Quality over quantity. All right. And then finally, of course, we want to filter your list of leads for strategic communication. You can filter for, uh, to include specific tags. You can also filter to exclude tags, right? So if you have a group of people that you have tagged over time with Have Shared Young Living. But you only want to find people that you haven't shared Young Living with. Then you can actually go and exclude the tag Has Shared Young Living and only find those leads who you haven't shared with yet, right? So, uh, one thing that's important to remember as well, um, is that some of your Young Living folks, especially as you get into creating more content that is for your leads, people who find themselves in alignment with your content will very likely opt in to your lead facing stuff. And that's okay, right? So somebody who's already a Young Living customer may opt in for that free training on whatever it might be, right? Pets or something like that. That just means that that's a customer of yours who, you know, wants to know more about pets. Don't worry about mixing up leads with customers, because you can always filter out your customers. Uh, if you want to, uh, focus just on your leads and vice versa. And then importantly as well, some people, we all do this, right? We forget which email address we opted in with. We try to log in. We want to find the thing, whatever. A lot of times we'll opt into the same thing with multiple email addresses. This is totally normal. Don't worry too much about it. Um, just make sure that whatever, um, you know, be in communication with your people and find out what their preferred method is. And go in and make the modifications accordingly to their contact card in your Good Oil Link system, all right? So look, guys, there's a lot more to know about maintaining and growing your email lists and staying in contact. And, and really understanding what the right and best things are to do where it comes to communicating with your Young Living customer group in particular. There's a lot to know and it's all worth knowing. Because this is one of the most important pieces of your entire business, your list, right? Especially when, and I know this applies to a lot of us here today, especially when you start adding in additional businesses and offerings, right? So if you're a coach, if you're an AFT practitioner, um, if you have, you know, a, a, a practice, whatever it might be. You know, or maybe if, if you don't know yet, hi, check it out. You could actually run multiple businesses from one Get Oiling account, right? So you, you really want to make sure that you're clear on how this stuff works. So that you can successfully do these things. If you are filtering and tagging your people appropriately. Uh, then you can really run multiple offers to very different audiences inside of one system. Which is pretty cool and it saves you just an absolute boatload of money, right? So in light of this, because we know this is something that's really in depth and it's never really something that we can get into the true depth of on a single weekly work session. We have put together an in-depth course to help you master your marketing, okay? Email Marketing Mastery is going to be live soon. So I want to put the bug in your ear. And I want you to start thinking about time that you can be putting aside to learn this stuff, okay? You're going to learn how to reach and teach like a pro. We're going to learn secrets to always landing in the inbox. Routines and workflows to manage your Young Living Lead and Client List, and it's all in one place, right? You don't have to go trying to search here and search there. All of this will be inside of one single vault in the Get Oiling Member area. And because we're live launching this course, you'll be able to get support on live calls to clarify any kind of questions you have. Um, you know, get clear on any strategies that you want to make sure you're following and so forth, all right? So if you're here today, you're watching this in the future, keep an eye on your inbox and on your Get Oiling Dashboard. This week, we're wrapping up the final live call of the Brand My Business Workshop. So we're not trying to overwhelm everybody, because we do have that. Um, we've got that, uh, finishing up now. This will launch next week. And just so you know, and don't worry, this is something that will be available in perpetuity, right? This is something that you'll be able to access from your Good Oiling Dashboard when you're ready for it, okay? So if you, if you don't have, you know, if you're overloaded, you're already working on other things, all good. This is going to be there for you moving forward. I just wanted to make sure that anybody who would be interested in being on the live calls for this and getting that hands-on help. Um, there's going to be an opportunity coming up for you in the next couple of weeks. So, uh, do keep an eye out for that. All right. So let's get into Live Help Q and A and our, uh, requests for site reviews. And to get into this Q and A quick, and then we'll get into our website reviews. Um, thank you guys again for your patience, uh, and for being here today. So Amelia says, thanks so much for this learning opportunity. I was doing very well once. I started with Young Living, but ever since the new program changed on how partnership and how to sign people up. Uh, I got so lost that I didn't know anymore how to build leads or even sign people up and tell them how this whole thing works. Maybe there's a class recorded about it. Try to find it. So Amelia, I'm trying to think of a training that might be particularly good for you and, um. Let's see, it would have been around the time that these new website changes went live a couple of, uh, a few months ago. Um, what I would encourage you to do is start looking at yourself as more of a wellness consultant, right? Find opportunities to connect with people and help them to believe first that things can be better for them. And then next, actually show them a path to getting it. And now really the only thing that has changed is that they don't have to buy a kit, right? If you're in the US. So obviously a lot hasn't really changed in other markets. But, um, if you're in the US and Canada, they don't have to buy a kit. So you could just connect them directly with the product that they want. And you can offer accountability moving forward. I would really recommend that you head over to our, uh, Get Oiling, uh, community on Facebook. And, uh, connect with, with folks there. I think there's going to be a lot of really great ideas, uh, to share there as well. And, uh, and keep coming on to these calls. There's a lot. Check out our YouTube channel. A lot there. So much there. All right. What if you've already been sending a newsletter to your members, didn't invite them, so they didn't opt in? Uh, just do this with new members. Allison, that's a good question. What I would do is create an automation that, um, will tag them with newsletter, right? Just like I have in that training that I, I talked about earlier. And, uh, and just send an email out to everyone that you've been emailing. And say, hey, I want to make sure I'm only sending you things that you are interested in. I want to respect your time. Do you want to continue receiving emails from me? If yes, click this button. If no, ignore this email, right? And so when they click that button, they'll then get tagged, uh, with Young Living Newsletter or something like that. And, uh, and that way, you are very clear on who it is that, um, that you should be emailing on a weekly or monthly or however often basis. Can you do multiple tags? Yes, absolutely. You can. I don't even think there's a limit. I'd like, there's so many tags in. Um, are there tags in one place in Get Oiling or do they have to be added to several places? Joni, once a tag is added to a contact, it stays there until you remove it. It can be added via a multitude of means, like what I shared earlier today. Um, you know, via manual input, landing pages, custom pages, automations. I think that's it, that there may be more. Um, but once a tag is on a contact, it's there. So you don't have to go add tags to several places. Uh, all right, uh, bed, uh, you're on the basic $29 a month plan. Rebecca, was it cost to add text in campaigns? You can actually use texting without getting your own phone number. It's better that you do. If you want to have the text in codes and things like that. Uh, there is some text capability, but, uh, two-way texting is an add-on of $9 a month. And you can reach out to our team. And pick your own phone number. And then also it forwards to your phone, like you can actually get phone calls and send texts and receive them. All right, Holly, uh, when you upload team every week, do you recommend taking the time to go in and remove inactives that drop off? No, because a lot of people don't even necessarily know that they're inactive or they don't know like when they would go inactive. So the longer you can preserve that relationship, uh, the better. And if you are, especially with your larger master list, going in maybe once a year and sending that permission marketing email off like, hey, you know, you've heard from me once or you used to order Young Living products. I've got free stuff that'll teach you how to blah, blah, blah. Would you like it? Um, that way you've always kind of got that opportunity to reactivate people. So no, I, I don't, I don't generally recommend, um, removing inactives. And this is actually kind of a unique thing for the Get Oiling platform. We don't charge for our plans based on contact volume. Because we understand that you have, a lot of times you could have an enormous VO file. Uh, especially a historic one over time, including your inactives. Um, you can have an enormous VO file, but a, you know, fairly small active list of people that you would contact. So, um, just make sure that you are always filtering for the people who are active and providing opportunities for people to reactivate, uh, by, by giving those opportunities for people to opt themselves in. Jenny has a Brand My Business Workshop question. Uh, on the blog section of the template, I wanted to change the button to match my brand. But now it isn't auto-populating to new blog posts. Would you please show me how to do that? Uh, Jenny, actually, um, let me see. I, I want to hit pause on this. We do have a live call. Um, at what 3:30 Eastern today, that's our, our second and final live call of the Brand My Business Workshop. So I'd like to walk through this on there if you don't mind. Um, and if you can join live, uh, that would be awesome. If you can't, I'll make sure that I cover this and answer it there. Um, and I'll actually go in, if, if you could, send me an email, ashley@goodoiling.com. And, uh, tell me what your, uh, like your, your address is for your website. So I can go and, and, and look that over and I can put that into the recording. All right. Just starting to do this. Do you provide a list of tags? Struggling with how tags get in the system? Uh, so Joni, all you have to do is, um, with tags. No, we don't provide a list. This is 100% up to you. Really, the, the idea here is to just be consistent. So if, um, if you're going to call your Young Living VO, uh, people, whether they're opted in or personals or not. You're going to tag them while VO, then do that every single time. If you're going to designate a new person that you've met, a lead. Then use the same lead or leads, one or the other tag every single time you're doing that. You can add that manually when you create a new contact. And you can add it automatically if people are opting in using landing pages and things like that. If you're not using landing pages and that kind of thing yet, then don't worry about it. Uh, you know, deal with that when you get there. When you watch a landing page training, you'll see where we talk about tags. You could also always go to the little question mark inside of Get Oiling on the bottom right-hand corner when you're logged in. And, uh, type in the word, uh, tags there and you could find more information. Someone starts tagged as a lead, do you manually need to remove the tag once they become a customer? Uh, yes, you can, but you can also have an automation that removes the tag. So, um, let's just say for instance, when you, um, depends on what your onboarding is for a new customer. So if you have a new customer onboarding system, that is, I send them this campaign or I add them to this vault, right? Uh, then you could add and attach an automation to that campaign or to the vault that removes the lead tag. Just depends on how you get customers started. Um, at, at whatever point you would designate someone a customer in your process. That's where you would want to apply either manually or on an automated basis, uh, the removal of that tag. When I go to my member area with training, some of my classes are gone, Brand My Business and Branding Intensive, and maybe missing others. Holly, you might have multiple email addresses that you're logged into the Get Oiling Member area with. So I would double check those. And, um, if you've, you know, if you want to kind of consolidate, just reach out to us. Tell us what the preferred email address is and, uh, and then we can make sure that that's right contact is added to all the things. Okay, away from home, hoping, okay. All right, Jenny, awesome. Okay, so, uh, now we're out of the Q and A and thank you again for your patience, for folks who are here for Live Help. Margaret, are you here? Can you raise your hand for me pretty please? If you are here and would still like to work together. Perfect. Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Awesome. How can we help?
Yes, um, uh, on my website, I'd like to just have a kind of look at it and see that everything's okay. But mainly when someone goes to my website, which is just, um, oh, wait a minute. Uh, Get Oiling Margaret Schneider.
Um, okay.
When you first get there, I think that's the one, it should be my, uh, balance.
This is you?
Yeah. See how when you go there, there's all that space up top? I'm trying to get the, get it more centered to where, if you go up just a little bit more. And I've tried the padding and stuff. I'm just not doing it right, I guess, so.
Okay, so.
I want the, the button to be just probably right about the top of the flowers.
Got you. Well, there's not really, there's not really a way to guarantee that on all devices. Um, but here's what we did. So you had single here. I'm putting it on cover.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, it's stretching out the full width. And then what we want to do here as well is let's lower that top padding a bit. Right? Another thing that you might consider is actually taking this image in Canva or some other place and actually shortening it.
Okay, that's what I needed to find out what, because that is from Canva and I believe I, 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 what size would be ideal for that to shorten?
What I, what I love to use is, um, either blog banner or LinkedIn banner as a preset. So if you're, um, going into, um, let me move out of here real quick. So if we were to use like the Canva button here, uh, you would type in blog banner or just type in banner. And either one of these two will work fine.
Okay.
Yeah. And then that way you can position it where the flowers are just on the bottom. But, um, but, but know that like because of, of just the nature of mobile and different devices and screen sizes and stuff. It's not necessarily going to look exactly the same on all of them. Um, but what you can do is replicate the section and then hide the sections that you don't want it visible in. So if you wanted to maybe make this section ideal for small mobile devices, then you would gray out these other guys. And then, uh, replicate the section and then have it only for the, this one or this one or this one, right?
Okay.
And you can always see what it'll look like by looking at these.
Right. And I think on the, on the phone, it doesn't show up anything but the, the wording, the lettering, and that's fine. That's fine. Okay, very good. And also I had a question, um, in the, oh, I'll let you look first.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. Go ahead.
In the vaults, um, how many pages are you allowed to put in?
Yeah, so.
On some.
Yeah, it's going to depend on your plan level. So, um, it's going to be reflective if you're at basic. I think that's a max of 10 pages, 10 custom pages. So it kind of depends on how many pages you have elsewhere on your site. So, um, yeah, and then of course I think at premium and higher, those become unlimited.
I think I'm premium, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's really not a limit to what you put in the vaults. It's just, you know, so long as it's a page discussion room or class, you can have as many as you want, especially if you get like unlimited vaults and classes.
Okay. Okay. And then so overall, the, the website looks, I'm still adding obviously to it, um, building it, um, so. Um, I've offered the free guide and then a consultation one-on-one. And then I also offer, um, wellness scans as a service.
Okay.
And that's for my.
They both lead to the same thing. Excellent. Beautiful. Love it, love it, love it. No, this is good. This is really good. I also, I, I appreciate how you have not provided other ways off of this page. This is really good, uh, as a landing page. You have one option is to click the button and get the pop-up. It's good.
Okay.
Love it. Oh, and let me look at the services page here. Oh, you have a dropdown menu from a button. Neat. Okay. So services is, let me see. There you go. Great. I love it. You have really made good use of the, oh, this is just one thing, biometric wellness scan and one-on-one console, right?
Yes, and I didn't, I just, when I did the services, it's kind of how I just did it automatically. That way I don't know if I can just. Well, anyway, it just came up that way, which is.
Well, it, it looks good. It's very, um, the, the way that you've branded your site is very elegant. It's very pretty. It looks good. Yeah. Good job.
Now, when you scroll down to the contact me, that's the one button I cannot change the color of.
Hmm. So let's go look at your colors and fonts here. And if we scroll all the way down, it's this guy right here.
Okay, so I have to change that one.
Yeah, yeah. And you'll notice as well that there are some, like for instance, this blue one. This is always going to show up on your pop-ups on custom pages. I believe, I don't remember which one of these, one of these goes to your, your member area. Um, and it's the buttons in your member area. So I recommend. and is the buttons in your member area. So I recommend really just changing all of these out to your palette so that anywhere they show up in the system, you can have that color.
Great. Okay. And I think that was it. Oh, I was going to ask a question too. Obviously I sell Young Living. But I'm trying to take the advice of not putting Young Living. I did have a homepage for Young Living, but I've changed it to this. Is that actually better that you don't use Young Living as your cover, your homepage? If you're, I mean, how many people using get oiling to just go straight to Young Living and they don't use something ahead of that?
Majority, I mean, majority of people will go straight to a built-in theme. So it's, it's really, it's a matter of how you share and, and how you want to be known and, and how you want to be sharing content. So if, if you aren't in a place yet where you're really looking to brand yourself and to be known for a particular thing that sort of transcends as an umbrella that includes oils, then just using the built-in theme as it's, you know, already in place for, for get oiling users is, is a perfect way to use our site as a tool for sharing Young Living when in your normal conversations, you know, you're, you're ready to share, right? But there are other ways to do this. So for instance, let me find, who's Leslie is a member of our community. So she's got a platinum team and, you know, and her real big thing is, is helping women to simplify how they go about living their day-to-day lives so that they can, you know, have calm and peace at home. It's for the overwhelmed mom, right? And so that's really her passion is talking to the overwhelmed mom. And she does have a page where she introduces her Young Living story. Uh, but it's all in the context of a wellness journey of a mom who used to be overwhelmed, stressed out. And then, you know, got introduced to Young Living and everything changed, right? So this is an example of, of where things could go. And she talks about what you get in her member area when you sign up and all of that. But most of what she's talking about on her website is really about the person that she wants to serve. Because she's in a place in her business right now where she's wanting to create videos, create blog posts, create content that allows her to be found and seen as an expert for overwhelmed moms, right? You don't have to have something like this in place to use the get oiling site to share Young Living successfully and to manage your business. This is, this is sort of an example of like a maximized personal brand that has Young Living as, you know, as a main income generator, to be fair. But that the conversation we're leading is not a billboard or a bullhorn for Young Living products. The conversation we're leading is about the person that we ultimately would like to be our Young Living customer.
Okay. And that's what I'm still working on, that, that person. And so I've been changing. I mean, I go in probably every week and change things because it's like still targeting that. But okay, that sounds good.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, I, I think that if you're stuck in that place, definitely try, try out the brand my business workshop. It is free. Let me show you where you can find it. Actually, if you go into my account settings, I think. And we go down here, brand my business workshop.
Okay.
Yeah, just go here. I've got like an avatar exercise where you can kind of explore what your ideal person is and how to talk to them and, and that, that should help a lot.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for coming out. Great work on your site. It's really pretty.
Thank you.
Okay, we also have Donna. Would you raise your hand, please, Donna, if you're still here? Hi. Hello. Happy to have you back. How's it going?
Oh, good. But I do have so many things on my website that I'm not sure how to put them all together. And I'm doing online vendor event, so I wanted to kind of flow to know what the best things are for gracefully aging faith-based women that have skin issues. So branding thing too, but to try to get it all together, I just get overwhelmed.
Okay. Well, is there anything in particular? We got a, you got a list we're working off of or what do you want to look at?
Just to look at the banner. And then I was trying to have a product, like a skin product, so that people would see that right away. But I'm not sure how to do the, yeah. Okay, so that's, that's my landing page. And
Okay.
So I've come, combined some of the things that I learned from Paula and then I didn't know what kind of banner to put there, but that, and then I don't know what buttons to have. And I, I think I just have too much going on. So then that goes to another page. The click here goes to another kind of about me page.
Okay.
So.
So it's actually, it's, it's not a terrible thing for the homepage of your website to be a sort of directory, if you will, right? It's, it's, it's not, it's not a bad idea. You do have like very prominently placed where it catches the eye and invitation to opt into something, which is really one of the most important things you can have on your website is this, this is right here, right?
Okay.
I think that the next thing that I would really recommend, and I think that this is a beautiful image. What I would actually recommend that you do is to create a version of this image that is just the flowers and the photo and, and not with the words here.
Oh, okay.
Right? And then what you could do, and I, I don't know that I would put oil of joy here because it's not necessarily going to speak straight to the woman, the woman who's interested in aging gracefully, right? Right. Faith-based woman interested in aging gracefully. I would speak to her directly and, and sure, this, this image might be a great thing to include here. I would use a section, let me go over to our pages here. This one's called beautiful page because Paula makes beautiful pages. So what I would do here is I would use perhaps one of these, one of these sections and, and maybe put this, put the image in right here, but again, just not with the text. And then, and then I would speak straight to her and say, you know, you, you were, you know, you were wonderfully made at any age, you know, join our community or, you know, if you're, you know, if you're interested in this, that or the other, you're in the right place, keep scrolling to learn more. Call her out right here.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Call her out and invite her to, invite her to, to, to continue digging and, and be delighted with what she finds here.
Okay.
Yeah. What else? Two of these, we probably want to fix that though. Here, let's, we don't. Do these link to different places or?
No, I think that was when was the phone and when was mobile and when was?
Oh, got you. Oh, see, you know what? I totally missed that. Perfect. All right. So this needs to be just on mobile and then the others are for larger devices. Perfect.
Right. So, yeah, then I was, I need a better picture probably there, but.
Okay, ready to look for special deals on my favorite beauty products, shop, find. Okay, so this. Is this where we're wanting them to click to go shop?
That links to, yeah, that links to Young Living.
Okay, perfect.
Picture of art.
Okay, perfect. So.
Oh, and then I, then I need to put my, like, I don't know how many buttons to have.
So what I think would be really great right here, Donna, is to have a picture of you. Because your brand is a representation of this desire to age gracefully. So having a photo of you, a really nice photo of you right here, and then maybe saying, want to get my secrets, you know, want to get my secrets and my discount? Click the button below and you'll find the products that I use, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, that's way more compelling than just a picture of a product they've never seen before, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, what else? What else? Tell me more. Where does this go?
So that goes to a landing page.
Okay.
Or.
In-person event information. Okay. Get my free guide. Are these the same link? Event information page and lead. So I'm going to unlink this. And these are also currently, you could see they're bullets, right? So let's go here and un-paragraph those bullets. There's so many bullets here. There we go. I'm going to take this natural living and skincare choices. And let's make those all maybe centered and a bit bigger. Get my free guide and then let's make this a button so it pops a little more.
Oh, okay.
Oops. So we can do that by going to style right here and I'll click that one. There we go.
Okay, great.
And yeah, and we'll, we'll turn this one into a button as well. Just again, so it's, it stands out.
So that middle thing is to do a button. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. This, this guy right here where it says.
Okay.
Yep. The same place where you can edit your link is, is where you can actually edit the. Okay. Yeah, you can turn any link into a button that way.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, of course, of course. Okay. I did want to check this one out because I noticed that the link here is actually to your editor and not to a published page. That's this, you see where it says get oiling app pages? So that is actually going to try to take them here, which is your editor. And if they try to go to your editor, it's just going to take them to the get oiling website, which we don't want. So let's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we're going to copy this link here and pop that right there. So that one's done and good to go. And the centering prayer one, we're just going to check our links out here. Centering prayer. That one's good. That's good to go. Awesome. I think we, I think we got it. Let's go. Take a look. Perfect. So now you just want to make the, you know, a couple of changes up here to really call out your person.
Great.
And, and then you've got these are all correct. Great. Yeah, swap, swap this one out here to a nice picture of you. And then, and then change this to, you know, want to get my secrets. And then these are good to go. And now this one actually goes to this page. Awesome. We did it.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, of course. Glad you were able to come out today.
I have something under opportunity. Because I didn't know how to put my member area or where to put that.
Okay. So yeah, let's, let's go ahead and look at your, your menu here real quick.
Okay, that's where I look at it. Okay.
Sure. So. Yeah, of course. So here's what I would do. I would combine member area with place and order. Perhaps.
Okay, okay.
We don't, so the, the thing is, we don't want to have too much stuff up here on the top. Because it can, it can cause issues with scrolling. So what I would recommend is, is we do, actually, we'll do, we'll do a work with me. How about that? We're going to call this.
Oh, okay.
With me. And this is going to not link. And so this is just going to be a menu that drops down. So member area will be there. We'll put place and order in there.
Oh, I see. Oh, that's nice. Yeah.
And, and we'll put opportunity in there as well. So we'll put, where is that? Opportunity page.
Okay.
Goes under there and we're going to call this login.
Okay.
And then we'll add one more and that will be to place an order. There we go.
Oh, great. Okay.
So now that's all in one spot. And I think, let's see, work with me. See, blog should be first. Upcoming events. Do, do you maintain regular events? Do you always have something coming up?
No, but I'm going to try to do for September, get some upcoming events to, to, so that people in the vendor event will be able to come to events. So.
Perfect, perfect. All right. So let's go take a look at it now.
Okay.
There we go. So I can go to your blog, see upcoming events under work with me. They can.
Oh, okay. I see. Great. Yeah.
And then they can get in touch by just going right there. So, perfect.
So I also have a consultation place and I forget where I put that now. I, I think it's on my homepage when.
Is there a page where you have them register for it?
Yeah, I think so. And I can't remember where it is.
Do you know, what, what is, what's the offering? Is it your, let me see. Okay, so.
I think it's on the net, on that next page on the homepage.
So this is, this is the, is it called home? Do you have something different that's called home?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So.
This one.
Yeah. And then I think I have a consultation somewhere around there. I'm not going to do elevate. I'm not going to do that 28 to elevate right now because I'm doing the, the, that one. Uh, is that?
I don't, I don't see one. I mean, I, I see the centering prayer. I see 28 to elevate.
Oh yeah, I guess I have it somewhere. Oh, it's on. Contact me or call, un-call, call.
Okay.
And I was trying to, oh, it's not going to.
There we go. Book a call. And this is going to, okay. This is your, your game plan.
Yeah, game plan. That's what it was.
Okay.
I forgot what it was. Oh dear. So many things. Cause I do want to have that. I need to, I think I need to work on that better, but.
Okay. Well, how about, we'll put that on your work with me menu so people can find it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So let's see, this page will be game plan. Okay. And then this is book a consult, maybe.
Okay.
Sure. And you could always change that. So let's move this up here because we do want that thing for leads to be prominent. Order. There we go. Okay.
Okay, that works.
So now, and just so you know, I don't know if this is your intention or not. You have this page is called home, but it's not set up as your homepage.
No, I was starting to have it as a homepage. I didn't know what, I just didn't know which, where to put. Do you think the other one's good for, for their homepage or?
I do, I do.
Set it up that way.
Yeah, it's very well developed. Perhaps you could turn this one into like an about me and maybe share your story. And have this be like an about me page. And that's something that you could put up here as well. So like about me, blog, events, work with me. Yeah.
Okay. And how do I add another, that goes to the menu then? The menu is where I add to that.
That's right. Yeah. So if we were to say, let's just pretend that that page was updated to be an about me page. We would add a menu.
Okay.
And this is going to be about Donna, perhaps. And then that is this one. And we would just pop that in right here.
Okay.
And then I'll pull this up to the top, save, and then we can go back and look.
Oh, I see. Great. Yeah, I wasn't sure how to do that too. Okay, thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
So much.
Of course. Thanks for coming out. Excellent work, you guys. Ah, it's always so exciting to see what people do with our platform. Jackie, that's a good question. Maybe let's be in touch in the Facebook group. I don't know the answer to that. Awesome. All right. So appreciate you guys. Like I mentioned, if you are a part of the brand, my business workshop, the final live call is today at three thirty Eastern. We will be, for those of you who are following our coaching platform, attract well, we've got a training there at 2:00 PM Eastern. If you guys are training junkies, we got you today. And we look forward to seeing you back again next week. Yeah. Great call, guys. We'll see you later. Bye.